Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, please be seated. And welcome to the regular board meeting for the Richland Bean Blossom School Corporation and School Board Trustees for January of 2020. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present tonight. Also, take this quick chance to let you know that Dr. Sanders has been putting, starting this month, a little snippet on our website about the agenda and items on the agenda. So, it's a good place for people at home, cats, to begin to look at the agenda ahead of time and know what's going to be here and for the public. And that was an excellent idea, Dr. Sanders, and we appreciate you doing that. So it gives those visitors who would like to comment on any items in the agenda the opportunity to do so, and that time is right now. So if there are any visitors present tonight who would like to address the board, we actually can come to the podium and state your name and... Okay, seeing no takers, we'll move on. We have the approval of the minutes for the December 16th, 2019 regular school board meeting. Do we have motion?
I'm in for approval.
I'll second.
Seconding. No questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll go to the business managers' report. Jennifer, over to you.
All right, so you have the three fund papers that I put over there with you. You started the education fund. Again, I boxed in and then bolded the two numbers that we continue to talk about as the year progressed, was that beginning cash balance at the beginning of January 2019 and the ending cash balance of December 2019. And that growth in the fund as we move towards that goal of hopefully having one month's operating balance as a cash balance in the education fund. So that's been good growth there in that. If you want to move over to operations, same thing. Again, with looking at where the cash balance started at the beginning of 2019, just over the $634,000 to an improvement of over $500,000 in that fund. And again, that improvement in cash balances to make sure that we're in a healthy spot to pay our bills and pay our payroll and all that good stuff. So as we continue to improve those things, that will kind of go back to some of those things that we talked about earlier as far as the healthiness of the financial condition of the school corporation. And that very last one, I just want to quickly point out that we did receive our tax disbursement in December. So you'll see that that's received in for December in the debt service fund.
Anything further?
That's it.
Any questions?
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
So you had mentioned the 570 group and operations. The number for the education fund was a growth of $814,000. So, just a little over $100,000. Excellent work. Excellent work. Okay, well, for the financial report, we have the treasures report for December of 2019. Motion?
I'm in for approval. I'll second.
Any questions on the treasures report? Amen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Annotation of claims for approval, Mr. Durrell.
Thank you, sir. I'll move approval for total gross wages for December the 6th through December the 20th, 2019, for $1,354,199.65 for vouchers, prepaid regular vouchers and Forest Hill vouchers, December the 1st through January 22nd, for $1,271,319.77 for a grand total of $2,625,519.42. I'd move approval.
I'll second.
Seconding. Any questions on the claims? None? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Nice. Now we have the Mustang moment. Dr. Sanders?
Okay, we're bringing back the Mustang moment for this second semester of the school year. So every month we will invite one of our schools to bring in staff and students to give us an opportunity to celebrate their success. We have such awesome students that are so talented, and this is really, as we've mentioned all the time, one of the highlights of the board meeting. And so, for January, we have the high school. So here's...
So first, I want to compliment Dr. Sanders and the board for providing this opportunity to the schools. You, I come to board meeting, to the board meetings monthly, and you have the business of the school, but I'm just excited that you also like to know what's going on in the classrooms and what's going on in activities. And the groups that we chose tonight, I think, are really relevant to come to speak to you because they probably come across your desk more than any other group with their trips and different things. So, prior to introducing them, though, I want to talk about the two teachers first just very briefly. Mr. Paulson and Mr. Wells both do an outstanding job with the extracurricular portion of our music program. Both our music choir program and our band, marching band and jazz band and concert band lately, have done exceptionally well in the last few years. But when you go into these classrooms during the day, I just want to say, you don't go in and just see show choir, or you don't go in and just see jazz music. I can go into those rooms, and they're working on reading music, sight reading. The students can talk more about that if they'd like, but there's just some really amazing things going on. A few years ago, Mr. Wells and Mr. Paulson and I spoke together about preparing kids for the music, AP music theory class. And so that's really their aim in their music classes, is to prepare kids for that AP level class. We didn't have enough students this year interested in it, but we have had in the past. So I would like to introduce to you Mr. Brian Paulson, Mr. Aaron Wells, and they will introduce the students and come up and speak to you. Thank you.
Yes, I echo what Mr. Ackerman just said. Thank you so much for providing us this outlet to feature our students whom we're so proud of. It's so great to be able to feature them. So, thank you very much. As far as the choral program goes, most recently, we had another successful year this year with Tid the Season, our large holiday production, Christmas show. It was another sellout for both shows. Full house for both productions of that. Most recently, this past weekend, Music Warehouse and Sophisticated Ladies went out to Twin Lakes High School in Monticello. We came home with six trophies. We won the small school champion division of both the unisex and the mixed division, and won first runner-up overall, only to Noblesville High School, who's just a little bit larger than ours. So, we were very pleased about that, and I wanted to thank you once again for allowing us the opportunity. We are so much looking forward to our trip later this year to Toronto, Canada. I think these kids are going to represent our school, our city, our state, and our country very, very well. So thank you very much for providing us that opportunity after our regular season is completed. So, thank you for that.
Aaron Wells, I would like to formally say hello, Mr. Irwin. I've heard nothing but good things from the Beach Grove guys, so...
First time I saw you guys was at the state finals, and I was pretty impressed.
That's right, that's right. So, you know, Cory still talks very highly, so he's sad to see you go. But I want to say thanks. I'm going to leave most of my talking to the kids because it's their minute, and I want them to be able to speak to you and kind of explain, you know, what we've been doing and kind of give a little bit of an update of what's, you know, what's to come for us. And I feel like after, you know, another very successful season for us, you know, people kind of think that we're kind of on the back burner right now, and the band guy gets some rest. And I think you're going to find out that we're just picking up more things to do. So I'm going to introduce my members, and I think Brian would probably introduce his members, and then they're going to kind of talk to, you know, say hello and kind of what we've been doing. So I brought with me my stepdaughter Trinity Stein and our three drum majors, Elizabeth Bollander, Annie Bloodsoe, and Colby Wicker.
I want to thank the board and Dr. Sanders specifically for allowing us this opportunity to come and speak to you guys. I think it's a very wonderful opportunity. But before I go too far, I'd really like to echo what Mr. Ackerman had previously said about two of, who I believe are the finest music educators, if not the state, the country. They truly are fantabulous, and I've worked with both of them fairly closely. And all the times I've gotten to spend with them have been true honors. So I really do appreciate you guys and what you do. It means a lot to me, I know it means a lot to other people. But anyway, let's start going down our list of the people who we need to thank because we have a lot of people we need to thank. I'd like to thank Dr. Sanders. He's been absolutely fantabulous for us. He has been one of our biggest supporters, and I thank you for that. I know that you really do care a lot about us, and I appreciate that. As to the board, I'd like to thank you guys not only for allowing us to do what we do and approving us through financial means and all those things, but also just knowing that we have a board like you guys who support activities such as the music program is very great, great to know that we have that support behind us because many, many schools do not. And it seems to be in this day and age that the music department is the first to go, and I know you guys really don't have that in your heart. So I do appreciate that. Mr. Ackerman, of course, he's a great, one of the best... He's, I mean, I've only ever gone to one high school, but from what I can tell, he seems, he's the best high school principal I've ever had. But truthfully, Mr. Ackerman is very, very engaged. He's at just about anything that you go to, any high school function, you're surely to find him somewhere around. And I know that that's not true for a lot of places, and I thank him for that. Our community, we couldn't do any of the things without our community, and I'll talk a little bit more about them at the end because they truly are special. Our parents and staff, they truly are the backbone of our organization. The student's going to do any of the things that we do without their support. And so I'd like to thank them, any of them who may be listening. And also, before I step down and introduce you to some of my friends, I'd like to thank the football team, Coach Doring and Coach Rosie. They truly, truly are really big supporters of us, which is really nice to see some cohesion with the athletic department and music departments. That is just really awesome to have a big school community like that and everybody coming together. Like I said, I'll be back at the end to go through some more people who I'd like to thank. But first, I'd like to introduce my co-drum major, Annie Bloodsoe, and she's going to talk to her for a little bit.
Hi, so as Colby said, I'm Annie Bloodsoe. This is my third year being in the Edgewood Marching Mustangs. In my second year, I was honored to be their drum major, which was really great. So this past season was tough. We added a lot of new stuff. If you saw our show, we had a lot of props and a lot of hard music and just movement, but everyone in the band handled it so well, and they just worked so hard, and it came together in the end, and it was just great to see that. I think this year, we are just, we're a really strong family, which helps a lot in big groups like ours. So that was really nice. The school board and our community allowed us to go to many different places for our contests, and at all of these, we were very successful. Some highlights, we traveled to Lucas Oil in October for Bands of America, in which we competed against many bands across the nation in our class, and we actually were runner-ups there, and so that was great. And then at state, we were runner-ups again, but that actually meant that we have been to state 13 consecutive years, and six of those 13 years, we've either been state champions or runner-ups. So that is just a really nice statistic that we like to think about, and it shows the success in our band. And we also, every year, march in the fall festival parade for our community just to give back and say thanks. And I know we always enjoy that, so that's really nice. And so now, my friend Elizabeth will be talking about some other things that we do.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Bollander. I am currently a junior. I have done marching band four years, and this year I was honored to be one of the drum majors. So after marching band is over, that does mean the music is over. As Mr. Wells and Mr. Ackerman have stated, we have jazz band. And then also, we had some students who applied for the Indiana Bandmasters Association All Region Band, in which hundreds of applicants are sent, hundreds of applications are sent in from around the mid-Indiana region. And we were lucky to have 10 of our students here chosen, namely, Amee Mercer, myself, Evan O'Connor, who was first chair, Ellie Grave, Josh Grimes, who was the principal trumpet, Corinne Smith, Madison Morganette, Elliot Buell, Tyler St. John, and Dan Fleming. And for All-Region Band, students are given music ahead of time and are expected to practice on their own. They're given anywhere from like five to six songs that they have to practice and have learned mostly before, towards the end of November. And where one Saturday, we have a practice where all of the students chosen meet together for the first time and have a big practice day. And the following Sunday, we have a concert. And I personally, being one of the people who go there, I think that is a good opportunity to be able to meet students from other bands and to just show your skills and be able to improve and get some teaching from some good staff members there. So as well as the members participating in the IBA All-Region Band, we had two percussion students that participated and performed in the Indiana Music Educators All-State Percussion Ensemble. These members were chosen from hundreds of auditions from around the state, and they performed last weekend at the IMEA Convention in Fort Wayne. Our representatives this year were senior Haley Nethery and sophomore Elliot Buell. And now we'll have Trinity talking about what our winter groups will be doing.
Hi, my name's Trinity Stein. I've done five fall seasons in the color guard. I've done two seasons as guard captain. This winter will be my second year in winter guard and my first season with the winter percussion. This winter season, we are actually starting to begin. We have our winter guard and winter percussion groups that are starting to build our shows right now, and some of our parents are building our props as we speak. The winter percussion will be working towards their third consecutive IPA state finals, and the winter guard will be performing around the area, and we'll be doing many local performances, and we will be having a guard clinic with young kids, and then a book drive for the youth in the Richland Bean Blossom area, and then we will be reading to the elementary school. And then last summer, we had two members of the Marching Mustangs Marching Drum Corps International. We also had an alumni as well. Me being one of them, I marched with Legends in Michigan while Luke Brenson marched in Madison Scouts, and our alumni Dylan Johnson marched with the Mandarin's from Sacramento. And then the drum line played for Alzheimer's Research Walk this fall, and we'll put on a winter preview as well as a youth clinic this spring.
Hey, guys, I'm back again. Just as, just as a final wrap-up, I wanted to talk very quickly about a couple of the things that we have done to try to pay back our community for all of the great things that they've done for us. As Trinity just said, we played for the Alzheimer's Walk in Bloomington, and recently, we, for Thanksgiving, we donated, I believe, it's about 400 cans of food for the food drive for Pantry 279. And that's just very little for what we could do to pay back our community and try and make our organization a great showing of what our school corporation can be. I want to leave you guys with my utmost thankfulness, and I really do appreciate all that you guys do for us because we couldn't do it without you. So with that, I'm going to invite my friends from the choir program to the top of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bailey Mathina. I am the president of Music Warehouse. I've been involved with the Edgewood Choral Department for, this is my sixth year now, seven if you count sixth grade. I've always been the type of person to hold an intense admiration for academics. I put in a lot of effort. However, I put in a lot of effort into my arts as well. It's very important to me. I've always believed that music is a universal language, as it influences people's emotions very much so. So for me, the choir room, both here at the high school and at the junior high, is very important. I feel that I can enter and just relax. School can get very stressful with six other classes, so even if we are meticulously working on our show, it's great to enter a place where you can just completely immerse yourself into music. It's taught me self-confidence. I guarantee you that if I had not immersed myself into the choral department starting in seventh grade, I would not be able to speak to you as I am right now. The amount of people that I've met through choir is absolutely amazing to me, both upperclassmen, alumni from Edgewood, and freshmen, some even middle schoolers. Overall, it's just made me open up more, and it's made me... It's made me feel really accepted. I can enter the choir room and I just feel appreciated, and I feel like a leader. I am able to lead a group of about 50 kids, so even just at this past choir, I feel that I impacted a lot of people. Mr. Ackerman said that when you enter the choir classroom, it's not just singing and dancing. To me, it's a family. It's very important to me. Those people in that choir room mean the world to me, and I would do anything for them. The bonds that you make are very special, and I'm very glad to be a part of the Edgewood Choral Department. So to wrap it up very quickly, choir means very much to me.
Hi, I'm Colton Leedy. I am the vice president of Music Warehouse, and I've been in the group, well, I've been in the choir program for about six years as well. And I would like to thank all of you for letting me talk here, and thank Mr. Paulson for inviting me and the band being here as well. Being in Music Warehouse has made a big change in my life, especially being a leader this year. I was always told that I might make a good leader at some point, but I never got the opportunity to try it out till this year, so that's pretty cool. Choir has helped me open up as well. I'm a quiet person sometimes, depends on whom around, but, you know, it's just hard to relate to most people, but I do feel pretty safe and comfortable in there, so it's a great thing. I'd like to keep it short. Thank you.
Sorry? Any questions? Yeah, sound good, yeah.
No, we're really proud of them.
Yeah, we are very proud.
For all their hard work and determination, it really makes us do our job pretty easily when we get to support them and what they do.
And it almost is a way of life, being in the arts. I mean, because there's just so much going on all the time, and the way that they do focus on the academics as well, it's not just the arts, it's a combination of the two. It is, you know, they're just stellar groups, and we just really appreciate the hard work that you guys put in to, you know, say, "We couldn't do it without us." Well, we sure can't do it without you. So you guys do an amazing job, and we really, really appreciate you very much.
I want to say something. I retired 10 years ago from this business, and I am again. And I've traveled around the state, working in dozens of school corporations. I've never, ever seen a band like this, and the way they practice and dragging those things out there on the blacktop next to the office, you know? But it's great. It's great, it really is. And I mean that, I've never seen that dedication before until I got here. It's impressive.
I want to echo that. Thank Mr. Wells and Mr. Paulson for continuing on the great traditions and growing them more so from the past. And one other group that you kids need to make sure you thank tonight as your parents, especially their freshman sophomore years, because they had to drive you up here in the morning, because I had to do it for four years, so I know how it works. So thank them for all their time, and the parent groups are phenomenal, both the band and choir, so that's where the village and the community works together.
Thank you again for coming.
Thanks again, thanks for coming.
I would just like to echo too what everybody else has said, and I would like to say something scholarly, like, you know, the research shows that there's a strong correlation between the arts and academics, but it's just fun to watch you guys. The show choir and the band, it's fun, I look forward to it, and I think I do because of how talented you are, and also how dedicated you are. Like Paul said, you know, that first day in the summer when, I think it's the drums show up, and sometimes right outside my office, but I celebrate that and glad you're there. So, thank you.
I just wanted to be said, I don't tell them to go there.
Right, Mr. Wells.
I just doesn't tell them not to.
Well, thank you, guys, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So it was a wonderful part of the evening, and we really appreciate them coming tonight and sharing with us. We'll continue with our business. We have the consideration to approve a voluntary annexation.
Yes, so the town of Noblesville is asking RBDCSC to consider a voluntary annexation of property west of EPS and EIS, basically the farm and then the field at the end of Sycamore Street. You have some maps in front of you. Kevin Piladi is here tonight. Kevin is director of town planning, and he's going to share some more details.
Sure. Thank you for having me tonight. I will keep this brief. The process is not very exciting, but I think for the town and for the school, it'll be a win-win. Basically, the town's been growing steadily for the past few years. I've been here since 2015, so I've seen a lot of growth residential. We're building houses all the time, and we've got to the point now where we're running out of land in town, and some neighbors have approached us about being annexed to the town. Problem is, they weren't necessarily adjacent, and the school owned a few properties in between, and if we could convince the school to annex some of their properties in, it would allow the town to keep growing residentially, which is, I think, great for everyone. Benefit for the schools, if you annex your properties in, if you do decide to build on going westward on some of those properties, you'll fall under the town's jurisdiction instead of Monroe County, which should make it much easier for you to develop in the future, and cheaper, and probably more efficient. I will be glad to answer any questions you may have. As far as the process, I'll briefly say, this will go through our planning commission meeting on February 6th, which is open to the public in case anyone would like to attend. And from there, we'll go to town council on February 24th.
Any questions?
Just west of, these are all past school properties, that is not annexed yet, right?
Correct. There's...
That's, you're going to continue going west of there also?
Potentially, depending on who's interested and where people are looking at developing. I know across, we just annexed right across from the elementary school for what's going to be a future subdivision, so it'll probably be, I don't know if it'll be west or south, but...
Okay, so right across what school's been annexed?
Yes.
It wraps up all the way to...
It wraps kind of around the cemetery.
Okay.
I move approval for both our annexations.
Seconding. Any further comments or questions? We'd like to say that we do appreciate the relationship that we have with the town. It's always been an excellent relationship, and again, I think this has been helped both as the area grows and residential, student numbers grow, so, which...
It'll help clarify law enforcement also, but, yes.
And again, I think this has been helped both as the area grows and residential, student numbers grow, so.
It'll help clarify law enforcement also, but yes.
That's great. We appreciate the town and how responsive the town is. Things get done, people want to be in the town about Ellisville because planning wise, you guys get things done. And so we appreciate the hard work you guys put in for that.
Thank you, we try.
Any further questions, comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Okay, the next item on the agenda was approval of Kelly Services, but we're still gathering information necessary to make a informed decision on that. So we'll table that for now. Anything you need to say further on that?
No, we just want to make sure it's an important decision, so we want to make sure that we consider all the factors. And we want to make sure that the agreement is what we want it to be. So we want to take our time and then possibly bring it to the board next month.
Thank you for putting in the effort. Now, it's permission to void corporation and or ECHX older than two years as of December 31st, 2019.
So this is an annual request that we make to approve, we ask you to approve voiding the corporation ECHX that are over than two years as of December 31st, 2019. You have a list of those in front of you. I didn't want to put it in the board packet for privacy reasons, but you should have a list there. So I just recommend approval.
I'll move approval. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions?
I'm just curious, we're not allowed to mention people's names, but were there staff members that had not cashed checks, did they reach out to them?
Robin, does that we do that?
Yeah, no, I think they found out, they kind of just donated it back to the band.
That's the three I was curious about, so that, okay, so those are
They know about it.
So how did that work, they had cash and then donated? I don't think they can just void it and donate.
If it was going for reimbursement, they could just donate whatever it was that they were getting reimbursed for. I thought that was it.
Okay. It's set for staff, it's set for page.
I don't know if that means
I don't know if that's for reimbursement or for the staffing wages, that's what I was curious, are they 1099 on?
What was your question?
About what it says, a donation for supplies or if there's a staff
I didn't know about that, that's, I wasn't aware of that. These are just checks that, as far as I know, they just haven't cashed. And so we're asking why they weren't cashed, I don't know. Yes.
Yeah, this clears up the painting.
I get that part, yeah.
If there is a dispute, then or not a dispute.
Yeah.
It doesn't void your obligation if you choose to
Anything further? We did get a motion, right?
Yes, we did, yeah.
I thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now we have consideration of donations, we have several. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, first of all, from the City of Bloomington Information and Technology Department for a number of computers, laptops, and audio equipment, equipment that was donated to RBB. Also, All Seasons Heating and Air Conditioning for donating $500 to the sixth grade boys' basketball team. And also $500 from Anthony Hayden, also for the sixth grade boys' basketball team.
I'll second.
Second, any questions or comments?
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Fantastic, yeah.
Always great to see.
It is the, you know, the community, the individuals and businesses and then partners at City of Bloomington. The City of Bloomington has made donations before with technology that they have replaced and still has use for life. And we appreciate their work there, so.
Specifically, it was thirteen computers and nine laptops. And talking to our Director of Technology with minimal cost, that some staff are going to get some really nice computers. That they will feel like it's brand new.
Good, awesome. Anything further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now we have a consideration of an out-of-state, out-of-country field trip. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so I would like to invite Brian, or Aaron Wells, to come up and speak to us about the trip for the marching band. I understand the choir's going also, is that true?
No, the choir's going to Toronto.
Okay, all right, so the marching band, we had it right. So, Aaron?
I don't, I don't know how it happens sometimes, but I got a letter in the mail a couple of months ago and I honestly thought it was spam. And I wasn't going to look at it and I finally was like, I laid it on my desk, went through it, went through it, and I finally opened it up and it was actually a letter from the mayor of Dublin. And I was like, okay, this is what, you know, what, I mean, thanks for, I thought this was actually a thanks for last parade or whatever, or we're trying to hit you up to come back. And what it was actually was a personal invite from his office. And I believe Mr. Ackerman actually sent you a copy of the packet, in the packet that he sent with you. And so I did some inner, I did some looking in and I actually talked to Greg Moore, who's been our travel consultant the last, I'd say fifteen years now that I've been here, he's been our travel consultant. I was like, what is this? I was like, is this real? And he goes, oh, no, it's real. And what would be is, what it is, is we would be the honored band of the mayor of Dublin. And when he comes down the parade route in St. Patrick's Day, we would be the band that's with him. So I got to work with Greg right away, I mean, we've done this trip now twice. And I got together with Greg and from Music Travel and we sat down and we had dinner and we talked about, you know, the things we've done before. And I'm like, that's really great, but we, I wanted to do some, you know, I wanted to see some other things. I wanted to take the kid to some other places that weren't just the touristy places and try to do the trip completely different than we ever have. So we put a lot of new, put a lot of new places in on our itinerary, especially like, I think we're going to go see a sheep shearing. And at first I was like, hmm, that doesn't, my kids are going to like that. And then I saw a video of, you know, sheep shearing and what they do at this farm. And then I actually talked to a couple, a couple band directors that actually took their groups there. They were like, that's the one thing the kids keep talking about. And I'm like, all right, well, we're going to, you know, hopefully we'll go see sheep shearing. I mean, I can take them to Owen County and see sheep sharing if they really want to see it. But, you know, this, you know, to see an Irish sheep get shared, I would assume is, might be a little more special. So Greg and I sat down and built an itinerary that is, you know, kind of based on having eighty participant travelers, that's both members that march in the parade, what we'll take with us in the parade, and parent chaplains, along with myself and hopefully Mr. Ackerman would go as the administrator on the trip. We're looking at it to be right now, it is definitely roughly estimated twenty-five hundred bucks. It's fourteen right now for the trip and we're still kind of waiting. We can't get air flight prices until a year out. So we're, you know, that'll open in March. We would leave, as of right now, we would leave Friday as our spring break started and we'd get back Thursday, still have our spring break. So we'd be missing no educational structure time. And we'd be going, like I said, with Music Travel and Greg Moore, again, the same group that we've traveled with the last three trips that we've taken and actually the last trip we took to Ireland. And they just, they have without a doubt, like, you come to the top with everything that the kid could possibly need. If the kid took the trip and paid for it, he could possibly take the trip and not have to take a dollar with him. Meals included, security included, travel included. You know, it'd be kind of like, it would be almost exactly the same way as last time. Hopefully we don't get a snowstorm where we get sent to London and back and whatever. But we would leave from here and drive to Chicago on charter buses, get on a plane from Chicago and fly straight into Ireland. And spend, you know, spend a couple of days in Ireland and be the mayor's band. So I just, I, you know, as I looked at it and I actually talked with Greg and actually was on the phone with the mayor's office, it just was a very, very awesome opportunity that I don't think we'd have passed up. So that's where we're at today.
I move approval.
Second, any questions?
When was the last trip?
We went last spring break to New Orleans.
The last time to Ireland?
Oh, we were, four years ago, yeah.
So this would be a whole new group?
A whole new group, yep. Yeah, and we, you know, we, you know, somebody said it earlier, I mean, you know, Mr. Tucker, our booster group is very motivated. I can't remember, did we take radio to Ireland last time?
It was after he graduated.
It was right after he graduated. So that's still to this day is one of the most amazing trips that we've ever had. So, you know, it does, it does bring forth some problems as far as like, you know, transportation. I mean, last time we went, we were on the way up and I'm watching it just blizzard. And we're like, oh, this is not, you know, and they keep saying, no, it's not going to be a problem, not going to be a problem. We were supposed to fly to Philadelphia, then into Ireland. Well, our Philadelphia flight got canceled, so we had to go to London. And the kids got to hang out in Heathrow for a while. And then it was, you know, just like true to, true to my group, they were awesome. Like, they handled every curveball that we, that got thrown at them and did a great, you know, had a great trip. So, you know, we, we are obviously a year out and that's, that's awesome. The way that we have the payment structured, if you've seen in the packet, it's basically monthly and small increments. So like, it's not a huge upfront, you know, here's, you gotta pay a thousand dollars tomorrow, it's a hundred dollars to reserve your spot and then, you know, over the twelve years, twelve years, twelve months, you know, to pay off. So, and it, you know, I know my parents, I mean, we know that we travel every other year and, or at least, you know, attempt to travel and we alternate between a small versus a large trip. And this would be, this would be a large trip year for us next year, so.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye, no.
And motion carries, four oh one.
If the board thinks that the superintendent needs to go
I think
I'll do my duty.
I've got a bag big enough, we can put you, we can put you in a drumcase and put you on the podium.
I think the board needs to go.
Back with the superintendent.
The next item is consideration of the approval of salary increases, increase for the Director of Maintenance.
Yes, so Arnold Caldwell's our Director of Maintenance. And Arnold is one of those people who work for the school corporation that I like to brag about, that's behind the scenes. A lot of people probably don't realize all that he does to make our schools safe and for the students and staff to go to nice and looking and clean schools. And I'll tell you, anytime I call Arnold and ask him to do something, he drops what he's doing. And so he's very much a team player. And so I think he definitely deserves a pay increase. And we're asking for twenty-five hundred dollar increase to his base salary and that's consistent with the increases we've given administrators. And it will be retroactive back to July 5th. And so I recommend your approval.
I move approval. Second.
Second, questions?
Evaluations are up to date.
Check. One thing though, he is at all the building construction meetings, right? Also
Yes, yes.
That's correct, so I guess it's my eyes and appeal.
Yes, and, yeah, he's very helpful with that.
Further, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now we have the consideration for the approval of a salary increase for the Director of Nutrition Services.
I mean what I'm, Vicki Coffey is our Director of Nutrition Services and I mean what I'm about to say very honestly. She's simply the best nutrition director I've ever had the pleasure of working with. Not only because she does her job well and she, she's the best at using the resources that she receives in such a way that, I mean, she's able to build up a healthy lunch fund. And then she, I was just talking to her about this, that she is one of those employees that, she does her job well, but she goes, she, she works for the corporation as a whole. So she sees the whole picture, that we're a team. Example of that is that she leads a survey and focus group on the marketing team. And so she very much deserves the same pay increase, twenty-five hundred dollars to her base salary. And that will also be retroactive back to July 5th.
I move approval. Second.
The discussion I would have, I was on the board when we hired her, that the lunch fund was over a million dollars in the red when she took over and just amazing what she did for us, so, amazing.
You know, in some key positions like this, Director of Maintenance, Director of Nutrition Services, they're really good employees that get, we get in those positions more than pay for themselves with the hard work that they put in and the funds that they generate through other means or save us in other ways. So both the Director of Maintenance and Nutrition Services are excellent. Vicki? Anything further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have the approval of the calendar, official school calendar for 2020 to 2021.
Oh my gosh, that sounds Mr. President, can we combine fifteen and sixteen together?
And we have the tentative school calendar for 2122.
Right. So the twenty, 2020, 2021 calendar has been on our website as tentative for a year. And that's the practice that we're trying to do, approve an official calendar and then a tentative calendar. And we're in your board packet and you should have them before you right now. The, we have three minor adjustments to what was on the, been on the website. And that is, we're moving the records day from January 4th to August 3rd. So the teachers will have two workdays at the start of the school year to be able to focus on preparing for the new school year. So there are so many training sessions and meetings at the beginning of the school year. So this will enable them to be able, be able to conduct those meetings and trainings, but have a second day where their whole day is working in the classroom. Second part of that is adding two scheduled e-learning days in September. So that, I think it's September 24th and 25th. And the purpose of that is to enable our teachers to conduct parent-teacher conferences. So we'll call two scheduled e-learning days. And so we will build into the schedule opportunities for the teachers to be able to be available to their students for e-learning activities and also be able to conduct their parent-teacher conferences. And the last part of that is moving the commencement to May 22nd for the 2020-21 calendar. And the 2021-22 calendar would be approved as tentative. And, but it pretty much, it mirrors the 2020-21 calendar. So I recommend approval of both.
I move approval. I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the calendar?
I have a question, on our e-learning days, are there limits to that? Because you only scheduled those two.
Are they limit, are there limits to how many e-learning days we have? There are not limits.
So a week out of school for bad weather, they could So a week out of school for bad weather, they could...
Well, we set our own limits in that because we give the students three days to, it's three days, right? Two days? Two days to, to come back and finish their work, we are limiting our e-learning days no more than two in a five-day period. So it doesn't become a confusing thing, so.
For those who may wonder why the kids start in the middle of the week, the younger ones, I, you know, have a much difficult time going all, all day, you know, all week, the first week, and I've heard anecdotally that it's much better to ease them into it. I also think it'd be good for the teachers just to have students for three days the first week to get into it as well. So I think it's a win-win for that.
I do appreciate the high school staff because of the commencement being on the 22nd, they're going to have to hustle, but we wanted to avoid having commencement on Memorial Day weekend out of respect for our families.
The chances of needing a snow day are diminished because we can make up for, do an e-learning day on that day, we could call it that morning, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, those may be mute points, but they're still...
You mean at the end of the school year?
Yes. Because if it's a snow day in the middle of the year, you could call an e-learning day.
You could. I don't know if I would, would go that route for...
That's, that's one of the concepts behind it, correct?
Well, the concept is during the school year, if there's a, a snow day, or if we have to cancel school because of inclement weather, we could call an e-learning day that morning.
Correct, okay, that's what I was asking.
That's what they're saying, yeah. You're right.
But I wouldn't, I would not use an e-learning day for like, May 24th or 25th.
Right, but by having an e-learning day, that could bypass having to do the...
Yeah, we'd probably have to have a really bad winter.
Yeah.
Historically, we went through a period where we didn't have any snow days, and we had them built into the calendar, and then so the next year, we took them out, and then we had some snow.
Yeah.
So, so e-learning is, is a nice buffer to help with that. And I think my son had to come back because of snow days one year after graduation, he had to come back, I think it was, I think it was him. So, and really do appreciate getting the calendar worked on so far in advance, because it, it's expensive to travel and things, and so when parents are planning vacations and family traveling for graduation and things like that, you know, getting, planning is, you know...
There is a lot of effort in creating the calendar, because the principals review it a number of times. I don't know how many times I asked them to look it over, and then we have, we always present it with the teachers association and, and discuss the calendar with the teachers. And so with every meeting, there's always an adjustment, but eventually you arrive at something you feel good about.
Anything further?
Has this been the cycle, always two years in advance?
Um...
Next year, we, next year, we can work another year ahead to help people out there.
That's something I think I started last year, is to, I don't know if it's before that, but I, I did it last year to, to be able to give parents a heads up, but you can't make too many changes on the tentative.
Correct.
Because once you post a tentative, even though it's tentative, people are already starting to make traveling plans. So when, like this year, when we looked, we tried, when we were looking at moving the tentative to official, I didn't want to make too many changes, because I, I absolutely knew some people who already made some travel arrangements.
Yeah, we basically would do it for the next year, and so this is, Dr. Sanders is taking it farther than what we've done in the past. We had ideas, but not anything that we actually voted on as a tentative.
And then I plan every other year to, to send out a survey, so last year, we sent out a survey asking, you know, questions about whether they preferred a whole week for fall break, or they would, would they rather have a whole week at Thanksgiving, those types of questions, just to see what, what people wanted to do. But I don't want to do that every year, so I, every other year.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries for both calendars. Consideration of approval of property and casualty insurance. Dr. Sanders?
Okay, I am recommending that RBB go with S-Craft Insurance. It's actually a trust, educational service centers, risk funding trust, of which there are eighty-nine other school corporations who make up that trust. We have been with May Insurance Agency and Liberty Mutual for a number of years, but as we've been in the practice over the last year, is we're, we're looking at everything. We're trying not to leave any stone unturned in terms of looking at services that we pay for and then also ways to save money. So property casualty insurance was just next on the list. There's some examples I've shared with the board in terms of our performance maintenance agreement for our HVAC systems, our copier lease, there, there, we've saved some money, and we've talked about how, and I'm going to mention in my superintendent's report, how we ended 2019 better than we ended 2018, and that's because we're finding ways to, to save money. So we conducted a number of meetings with S-Craft representatives and also with Lisa Sloan with May Insurance Agency, and we had a, a document that was created that both companies were able to review and revise, which compared the coverages and then the premium. And in the end, S-Craft, there were sixty-plus areas of coverage which were better, and also the premium was about thirty-five thousand dollars less. And once again, I, I just want to kind of go back and, and just want to say my appreciation to Lisa Sloan, because when we first started, she talked about there, that there'd probably be a twenty to twenty-five percent increase in premium, but she was able to, to get our premium to be the same as the previous year. Unfortunately, it was still a lot more than, than S-Craft. So we're going to be able to save for the first year fifty-four thousand, four hundred and five dollars, and then for each of the next two years, we'll be able to save thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars for a three-year savings of almost a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine to be exact. And so we have put in a lot of time, Matt has put in a lot of time, and Paul, and so we would recommend your approval.
I move approval. I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I want to thank Matt and Paul and Dr. Sanders for all the time and energy they put into this. It's not a quick decision, and they took the time to research it, and I think S-Craft will provide some other services to help the school out with risk mitigation, so thank you for your time.
And we do appreciate the May agency and the relationship we've had with them for the years, and, and, you know, we'll keep looking at this down the road and in the future again.
Absolutely.
And so we do appreciate them. They've, they've been a very good partner for the schools in, in the past years. Do want to thank them, but, you know, as the fiscal body, we must make fiscal decisions that's good for the corporation, and the savings, it's a significant savings.
Right.
And it also locks it in for three years, right? So that, you know, it couldn't go up next year or the year after. So the benefits are unknown, but they could, it's not going to go up, but it could be significantly even better than, than that, because it's going to keep it from going up. So lots of, okay. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Five oh. Consideration of a master government lease agreement.
Okay, and Dave, feel free to join in here. Master government lease agreement provides a, a general borrowing framework that includes basic information that would be in any lease agreement, in terms of terms, representations, and warranties. And it basically, the, the role of this agreement is to streamline the borrowing process with People State Bank, and that was a rookie-type answer, so you probably have a lot more...
What this is, is we find as we go through the year, and sometimes, for example, like a copier lease or something like that, the vendor will say, oh, and by the way, we have this financing. And often, it's at an unfavorable rate. I mean, we have a local bank in our community, in our district, who's perfectly willing to lend, and on almost every occasion has been the low offer and low rate. And so what this lets us do is contact the bank and say, what would be your rate for this? And they tell us, and we say, great, let's add that to our master agreement. The nice thing, we've already lawyered this agreement up, we can add to it very easily. You're not going to be handing us, which we have experienced over the years, some brand-new financing document from some third-party vendor with a whole bunch of weird language that we end up saying, we shouldn't do any of this, but, you know, the train is leaving the station, we want the new copiers, we want the new whatever. So this just allows us a way to say, we can easily borrow the money at a favorable rate from a local vendor, we already have the structure of our agreement with them, we don't need to re-engineer, re-engineer it every time. So I think you'll see a real savings and a streamlining of efficiencies, and it allows us to, to borrow this money at a rate that makes the most sense.
All right, you have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
No, we appreciate the work going into the government lease agreement, and I do understand how that could definitely save us time and energy. Somebody else throws something out there to us, we already know what we can bear. So it's a great, great benefit, so.
Anything further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Network of personnel, we have A, resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves, and terminations one through nine, and appointments and transfers would be one through eight. Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
I'll vote aye.
Second to that?
Second.
Discussion would be Larry DeMoss. Thank you, congratulations. You've been great for us.
I, did you not get my recommendation not to accept that?
I wasn't sure how that, I was wondering about that verdict.
They kept sending me the agenda and wanting me to, you know, review it, and I kept striking that out and sending it back, and I kept getting it back, and there it is again, so I don't know. I don't know. All right, is there anything further on those?
When we, when we take the vote, I'd like to be able to recognize two people.
Okay, all right. The discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries for five oh, and now turn to Dr. Sanders.
We have two retirees that I have the honor of recognizing.
I didn't see Carol, I'm sorry.
Carol Bernie, thirty-two years of service as a social worker at RBB, and Carol was instrumental in writing the Lilly Comprehensive Commencing Grant, or she was my right-hand in writing that grant. She's a leader in our social-emotional learning efforts, and she has been an instrumental, instrumental part in building a quality mental health team. So she handed me her letter, and I refused to open it for a few minutes, because I was really going to miss her, her working for RBB. And the same goes for Larry DeMoss. Larry is one of the first people, when I came to RBB, Larry and Doug and I went out to lunch, and of course, I knew Larry because of my son Joel being an English teacher here at the high school, and Larry was a big help to Joel. And ever since I was a principal, I've always had some go-to teachers that, who I respected, who would tell me like it is and would give me the honest truth about the teacher's perspective, and Larry is one of those guys for me. And, and I love hearing him announce at the sporting events and, and other events, and so he definitely deserves a, a great retirement.
We do appreciate the years of service of both, and I think that, you know, for Carol, for all the hard work you put in on the mental health, she probably felt, hey, I feel safe now, that, you know, they're in good hands, so that, and Ms. DeMoss, sure will. I think she's still at the conference board meeting, Brian.
Thanks.
Your wife's not retiring, so you're going to have a little time.
All right, we'll have Ms. Layous information, Dr. Sanders.
Really? It has to do with our show choirs. I put together the schedule for junior high show choirs and our high school show choirs. That schedule, you have a copy of it in front of you as board members, and there's also copies at the table. I used, you know, we already really spoke a lot about our music program, but I look forward to when the show choir season starts. I know the parents, they, and parents put in so much work, I mean, the students do too, but I know the parents are here just as much, and they're, they're just so fun and talented to watch, and Brian already shared the success they had this past weekend, and I was going to share that miscellaneous, but I hope to be able to get to as many presentations, performances as I can, and then I just wanted to recognize that Contest of Champions will be out February 8th. And so that's my miscellaneous for tonight.
Good. And the Contest of Champions for, that's the competition that our school puts on, and it is good for the community too, because it brings a lot of individuals here, a lot of groups come here, I think there's twenty-five groups this year, not to mention ours, that are performing. That's a large influx of people into the community to, you know, who need services, food, gas thing. Now, we do have food here for the, that they sell there, but, but it is, it is nice, and it's, and the, the community is very welcoming when we have that, and they'll often put their own signs out and things in, in recognizing that.
We have such a nice high school, it's nice to show it off.
Yeah. Awesome. And there is now a lot more correlation between the places that the high school goes and the junior high goes now, and that's really, that's really nice, too. It's been, it's our fifteen years in the league. Okay. Superintendent's report, Dr. Sanders.
Yes, well, since this is the first month of the new year, I thought it'd be a, a good time to kind of go over my goals. These are the five goals that I made when I first became superintendent, and really, they just, they drive what I try to focus on in the corporation, and, you know, the number one goal is to lead RBB to a position of financial strength, and, and thanks to Paul. Paul talked to me a lot at the beginning about creating a, a culture, and so we've been trying to create a culture of doing business better. And that doesn't mean we're trying to, we're criticizing any, the way business was done, it means that we're continually going to be evaluating how we do business and looking for ways to improve services and to save money. And as you can see, for the funds for education and operations, how we ended 2018 and how we ended 2019, and the difference. An eight-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-dollar increase in the education fund and a five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar-plus increase in operations. And I think, I know it has a lot to do with how much Paul's been working, and now Matt, Matt's picked up, and he, Paul threw him the ball, and, and Matt's just, is running with it. I asked them to come up with some ways, what are we going to do thousand, in 2020? And so they've shared some, some things that they're targeting for 2020, and so we want to keep this momentum going. The second goal was to lead RBB to a sustained growth in... The second goal was to lead RBB to a sustained growth in enrollment, and so far, we're headed in the right direction. And I wanted to be able to show September to September and then February to February. And as you can see, from the ADM in September 2018 to the ADM in September 2019, we gained 68 students. And then when you gain, when you look at February ADM 2019, now, we haven't come to the date for the February ADM for 2020, it's February 3rd, but so far, we're up 70 from a year ago. And we definitely want to keep the ball rolling in the right direction. One of those big areas that we believe is going to be providing us the sustained growth is building our preschool program. And we've made some great hires over the last year or so, and Matt Wooden, for our Director of the Preschool, is one of those amazing hires that we have, and he's going to talk a little bit about PAST Equality and the Level Three that we're trying to get to, and how that's going to help us to grow. Matt?
Yeah, Dr. Sanders asked me to come and share with you some thoughts that I had shared with him and with Matt, of past few weeks especially, related to PAST Equality. If you're not familiar with PAST Equality, it's the state's rating system for early childhood educational environments. People who are running a daycare from their home can apply for PAST Equality. Daycare centers, schools like ours can enter the PAST Equality system, and it's a rating system that goes Level One to Level Four. When we moved to our new location from the old facility out on 46 into EPS this year, we needed to re-license with the state, recertify with the state, which also takes us back to a level than we had been. At one point, EEECC had made it to Level Two, but then needed to be taken off the program because they weren't meeting those requirements, and now we're back on. Jen Anderson did some vital work last year to get us going back in the right direction. We need to get to Level Three, and there's a few reasons we need to do that. With each level, there are some financial incentives from the state. Those are relatively minor, one-time financial incentives every time you level up. A major benefit of being on PAST Equality, even at Level One where we are now, is that they provide you with a mentor to help guide you through the process. Your mentor is not your raider, that's not the person who comes onsite and actually provides those ratings, but she is with us to get us there. The two major criteria for being PAST Equality Level Three, we are part of a state referral system as part of PAST Equality, which means that when people are looking for childcare, when looking for early childhood education, they can go to the state's database of providers, and we're in there right now. But when you look at us, you see a Level One next to our name. From the benefit of public perception, we need to level up. When you're comparing others in our area who may be a Level Three or a Level Four, we need to be there so that people understand the quality of education that we're providing. And another biggie is that when you achieve Level Three in PAST Equality, then you could be an On My Way Pre-K provider, which means that the state will fund 100% financially-eligible families who are one year away from starting kindergarten. In other words, if we have the classroom space, we will always be full. People who are unable to provide financial assistance for their children to attend preschool, when we're a Level Three provider, that's no longer an issue. The state will provide 100% of the funding necessary through a voucher system to enable those students to come and be a part of our early childhood environment. We're currently working on Level Two criteria. Our PAST Equality coach, our mentor, was onsite this past Friday, gave us some things that we need to do to make sure that we're there, but we expect to be there very soon. There are a couple tweaks that we need to make. We're trying to fast-track to Level Three. Our goal is to accomplish that by the end of this school year. Of those Level Three criteria, two of the three major categories were right there. We've got a partnership with the Community Foundation of Bloomington that's put our curriculum in place, which is the Creative Curriculum. It's a child-centered, play-based curriculum, addresses early learning foundations for the state of Indiana. They funded getting that curriculum onsite for our classroom, and a lot of the goals, a lot of the criteria for PAST Equality Level Three are related to having a curriculum in place that does the things that the Creative Curriculum does. We have a balance on that grant of about $14,000 that we're working with PAST Equality and the Community Foundation to get additional curricular resources, to get materials onsite. A lot of those PAST Equality criteria are based on the physical resources and materials that children have access to in the preschool environment, and so we'll be able to add those resources by the end of the school year. That part of our grant writing will be done by the end of the month. One central component of those Level Three criteria are the education of your staff. 50% of your teaching staff needs to either have a CDA, a Child Development Associate's degree, or some kind of equivalent certificate, or an early childhood degree or equivalent degree, or they need to have completed 60 clock hours toward either a CDA or their degree. So we need to be able to hire and maintain a staff with that degree of education level. We're in the process of trying to figure out with PAST Quality which of our staff can qualify for that. Can we include our inclusion teacher and our speech and language pathologist, people who have advanced degrees in that? We're trying to figure out whether we can meet that 50% criteria. But those are the major criteria, and we're close and we're making progress toward it. So any questions for me about PAST Quality or what we need to do to... Yep?
Very familiar. I do have a question, though. Our goal for the preschool is to get children in the corporation. So how is this going to work if we're going to qualify children through whatever organization is going to send them wherever they have the voucher to go? Because we'll have kids coming from everywhere. How are we going to make sure that children in our district are going to get to come here before our children over there because they have a voucher come here?
Sure. We can still prioritize our seats, the way we see fit in that program.
So it'll be key to let the actual students in our area know you have to sign up for this, or you'll lose the spot.
Yes, absolutely. And also, you know, we do, and especially as our number of seats increases, you know, we see the potential and value, too, of being able to take students from outside of our school district and neighboring areas. It's an opportunity to get more students in the door at RBB and sooner than kindergarten.
Yeah, I agree with that, too. I'm just concerned that people just assume it's RBB, my kids are going to school here.
Right.
Why can't they get in preschool, you know?
Right. Yeah, yeah. We're limited by the number of seats that we have, but we have some authority in how we can distribute those seats.
Well, from my limited knowledge, what I've seen up there, you're doing a fantastic job. The kids seem like they're just tickled to death when they come out and go in, and we're just tickled to death with it. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let me go ahead. I was just going to say with the bond, the 2019 bond and the additional classroom space is going to really open up a lot more seats for preschool.
Absolutely.
You can handle more seats?
Sure, oh yeah, bring them on.
Well, Deborah said down there, they know that a navy school corporation is in that similar situation where we got to take care of our kids first, and then make sure that they understand what the pecking order is. I don't know if we're going to have that in writing or not, but we need to have something kind of like a rubric, and then, because you are going to ask people to bring voucher students here as well, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. We do have...
Problem to have.
That's right. We do have some current priorities in terms of enrollment, and we'll continue to develop that as our potential enrollment growth.
So just to conclude, my goal number three was to lead RBB into a culture of servant leadership, and really, there's a lot of evidence of that already going on, and I just wanted to highlight, to me, it's an exciting project at the fifth-grade level. They are gathering the single-use plastic bags, and they're creating sleeping mats. So it's helping the environment, helping those folks who are fortunate to be homeless, and so it takes 800 to 1,200 bags per mat. That's a lot of work. Goal number four is to lead RBB into a strong partnership between school, the family, and the community. And based on our survey, communication was a big result of the survey, that some thought we had too much communication, some not enough, but we want to explore that deeper. And so one of the ways that we're going to do that is we're going to start a parent-focused group, and we're going to call it Soup with a Soup. And so some parents will be invited to participate in this, and we'll just have a general discussion. This particular case is going to be on communication, and I don't know how many of these we'll do, but we want to get started and at least do one, and maybe one or two per semester. It just depends how much time it takes. But it'll give parents the opportunity to come in, and of course, we can't have all the parents, so we'll just have to come up with a way to be able to identify those parents. Right now, we had a number of parents in the parent's survey that said they would be interested in somebody contacting them. So we're contacting those folks and inviting them to be part of this first focus group. And then, as Dana mentioned, starting the monthly board preview, and it's not just reading, I don't want to just read, people can get on the website and read the agenda. So I just wanted to give a little bit more information, and it really, it didn't take very much time because I was already prepped for the board meeting anyways, so... And then the last one was to lead RBB in preparing students to live happy and successfully in tomorrow's world, and our Ready Schools Initiative is all about that. And today was a big day. We had, it's called ideation phase, and we were just taking the "how might we" statements that the design team created and brainstorming how we could turn that into reality. And so we're starting to see a little, you know, shape of where we're going, starting to form, so... A lot of good things happening, and a lot of good people work for RBB and work so hard, and I just appreciate each and every one of them.
Thank you very much. RBB EA Proments, Mr. DeMoss.
Well, I presume most of you got to see the State of the State address, where Governor Holcomb said that we would have to wait until next year to address the financial needs of the schools, so I am going to encourage people in the community to contact their legislator and tell them that perhaps we need to wait until next year to vote for them. But that's, there's no reason, and especially when they're going to take some money and invest it in the hog barn at the state fairgrounds. I would also echo what Colby said earlier. I definitely would have to say that Dirk is among the top 10 principals that I've worked with. He laughs. Snuck out on me there. But, and then, congratulations to Coach Ratliff and the wrestlers for their performance in WIC, and along with the swimmers and both basketball teams. I did touch base with Mr. Hammett and asked him if he would be interested in allowing me to use the microphone in basketball games next year. I might pass along the football mic for next year, but I thought that was something that I might enjoy. And, but I've been really enjoying Coach Wattsworth's approach. Gary Sims is having a great year as well, so it's been a lot of fun this year, and I appreciate the kind words. It's, Carol and I came in the same year, and we're going to go out in the same year, and it's been, it's been a delight. It's impossible, it's been 32 years. It just, it was yesterday. But 32 years ago, in a room across the way, the board voted three to two to hire me. I'm glad that you accepted my retirement unanimously. I think that puts me behind altogether, though. Bastard, you're more happy to get rid of me than hire me.
Let's see, board member comments? We'll start with Mr. DeMoss.
Thank you, sir. I, too, wanted us to commend the boys' basketball and the girls' basketball. The girls are having a great year, and it looks like the boys are heading in the right direction, so we're tickled there. The Mustang moment tonight, Superintendent, that was fantastic. I thank you for bringing that back.
Sure.
And I want to, I just appreciate all the board members, all what you've done and how you do things and the professionalism you are, and I appreciate that very much. So, thank you.
Mr. Jacobs.
I always love hearing the Mustang moment. That's, I look forward to that every time, and I'm really excited to hear from the world department, the band, kind of near and dear to me, so I love hearing them, and I like every month, looking forward to that. Again, thank you for the donations from our generous donors. We can't do it without you, so we appreciate that so much. I'm excited for the trip for the Marty Mustangs to go to Ireland. I really want to get in somebody's suitcase, so if you can tuck me in, take me with you. And thank you, Dr. Sanders, for everything that you put in for the corporation. We appreciate you very much in keeping us abreast of everything that's going on in the corporation.
Thank you, Andy.
Here, here.
I agree with them, and also, thank you and Matt and all the financials and the healthy financial situation we are in and we are building on. It's just extremely important to keep this school district running in a positive way that we are right now, so looking forward to working with that.
Keep it up.
Yeah.
Mr. Tucker.
I want to congratulate Mr. DeMoss, and thank you to Mrs. DeMoss for letting you retire. So that's going to be a change at your household, but Mr. DeMoss was a big impact on my family, my son, and he also approved a few of my things back in the day that I had to double-check. So thank you, Mr. DeMoss, and thanks to Ms. Bernie, too. She's been a leader in a lot of different ways through the school, and been an advocate for kids, so congrats to her. Thanks to Mr. Wells and Mr. Paulson for bringing in the kids tonight. That's always enjoyable, and I really enjoy hearing it from the kids.
Aye.
And how they present, how they present in front of a group is very impressive, so hats off to them. Thanks to Dr. Sanders, and thanks, Paul, for helping out Matt and continuing with his mentoring, and I'm looking forward to him having a good career with us, so thank you.
Well, so many wonderful things said, I echo all of those as well. I guess for me, the outstanding thing is the Mustang moment as well. The, of course, I've been involved with the choir program for many years, and the nice thing about being on the dad's crew is that you get to watch the kids, and the kids end up treating you like you're part of the backdrop because you're just always there, and they ignore you, so you really get to see the kids and their true element. And we have some amazing kids in this school corporations, and the way they work with one another, the way they lift each other up, you saw that tonight. We have wonderful students, and it's a pleasure to serve on the board, to serve them. So thank you all for coming tonight. We'll have board signatures, and this meeting's adjourned.